Joseph for February eighteenth, six P M. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, public comment. If anybody would like to address the council for anything that's not on tonight's agenda, feel free to step forward to the podium. Just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Anne Seab and I live at nine forty-seven thirteenth Avenue Northeast in St. Joe. I've been a resident for about twenty plus years on two different points in my life. I am just here because I'm curious and I'm new to all of this, but I am interested in the getting more involved in the community center and particularly now I think it's the YMCA and I'm just curious what sort of where we're at with that process and how I might be able to get involved. But I really, really want to have a lap pool in the Y. I am a former employee of the City of St. Cloud's Y. And I see that the Y could be a benefit to our community as a whole, not only as a community center, but also as possibly an income generating using the pool as a means of getting aquatic swimmers and aquatic teams to host events there and utilize the facility as more than just a small pool that might have means for, you know, splashing around on a Saturday day. I just feel like we as a community, the side that size that we are could go beyond even St. St. Joe, but more rural to Cold Spring, et cetera. So I just have a passion for it. I'm wanting curious as to where we're going with it. And if we're too late in the process to have a dialogue about how it could be an income revenue generating facility rather than a means for community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? With that, we'll close the public comment period. Move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Any other comment? With that, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Any further comment? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approves. Item number five, short-term rental ordinance amendment. Is that for you, Nate?
That is correct. So, good evening, mayor and councilors. For your consideration this evening is a final drafted ordinance amendment for a short-term rental. So I hit on some of these at the January council meeting. I just want to rehash these and give some more history in case folks are listening in or curious. So conversations really started back in April in regards to our short-term rental ordinance. Specifically, those conversations revolved around the use in the downtown commercial district. Around May, the council explored the topic at a workshop. And then from June to September, there was many discussions and review of ordinances and review of regulatory mechanisms that the planning commission looked at along with drafted language. That brought us to the September ninth Planning Commission meeting, which the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on to allow short-term rentals in residential and commercial districts. The council tabled adoption of that draft at the September sixteenth council. And then further discussion happened in November at a workshop where council directed staff to include language that would require conditional use permits for this use in residential districts. At the January meeting, we talked about those revisions that came forward from the council workshop. And now we are to tonight, February eighteenth, for consideration of the final ordinance. Again, just so the proposed ordinance language, we defined what a short-term rental is. And we also added into the definition of owner-occupied housing. So previously, we had housing that is the principal residence of the listed owner of the property. In bold, we added that a principal residence refers to a dwelling that the owner occupies for at least one hundred and eighty-three days or more, so for the majority of the year. We added that clarity piece just to further define and add stipulations to what is owner-occupied housing. In terms of zoning requirements, so in the majority of residential and agricultural districts, it would be a conditional use permit, which entails the public hearing, planning commission, and then council approval. And then the short-term rental license and inspection. In commercial districts, if the use is secondary to a already existing commercial use, then it's just a rental license and inspection. And then in commercial districts, if the use is primary short-term rental, so the sole use of the property, then that would be the conditional use followed by the rental license and inspection. And this is no different than other similar lodging establishments where we talk about hotels and motels in our commercial districts. They also have to obtain a conditional use permit as well. So we kept that consistent to be fair across the board. Just some other summary, we added some proposed fees tied to the short-term rental use. We also are grouping these annual license renewals into our standard rental license renewals in terms of the time period. So the same time that our standard rental license renewals will go out, our short-term rental license renewals will also go out. So that way we're not duplicating any efforts. We're keeping that, the time that we're spending on that to a minimum since we're already participating in other renewal notices. Again, lodging tax applies, and that's three percent of all stays that occur at the short-term rental. Owner occupied is a requirement in our residential and agricultural districts. We also require that the short-term rental displays license and emergency contact information at the exterior of the front along with their license. And again, that's just for in case we have after-hours calls. If our PD goes out there, that there's someone that they can reach. And then just adding a clear process and definition for our enforcement mechanisms. As far as the public, I have had and been in correspondence with about four individuals that have reached out. Two of those individuals are interested in doing a short-term rental in our commercial district. Two others are interested in doing that use in residential districts. There was one concern related to, I'll call it the duplication of inspections. So any lodging establishment that exists in the state, the state passes on required inspections to the county. So the Department of Health will require that the county inspect those lodging establishments throughout the state. And that does include short-term rental along with your typical hotels, motels. So the concern was related to, from this individual is related to, are we duplicating efforts by having the county inspect and then also the city inspect? And kind of the response to that is, well, yes, there'll be some things that we'll both be checking, but we're also really safeguarding our own ordinance and making sure that our own requirements are being met. And we don't, of course, control any of the state requirements. So the state's going to have their own process and their own checklist on what they're looking for in addition to what we are looking for. And we want to make sure that we are inspecting these units in accordance to our ordinance. You know, for instance, the display of the license, the contact information and those things. And we also tried to keep those fees very minimum in terms of what the fee would be charged to the short-term rental. So with that, there's two actions that are requested. The first action is a motion on the ordinance resolution, two thousand and twenty-five zero zero one, which if that's approved, that would allow the short-term rentals subject to the drafted ordinance. And then action two is the summary publication of the ordinance, which we would have to publish. And then if both of those are approved and adopted, then we'd go into that agenda item six. So with that, that's my presentation and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I just wanted to clarify, as we talked about residential versus, of course, the commercial the last time. And so were, did we come, because I cannot remember when we came down to the end of that conversation with, of course, the parking for residential versus the commercial, that it should be paid for commercial, but they would follow the ordinance of the city if it was residential. And then, of course, clarifying in here, which kind of, you do a little bit. You did do, I mean, I do have to say you did do a good job, but I just clarifying a little bit more with that residence. So I I got the one hundred and eighty-three days. And you did specify the certain areas, but it, I just saw you highlighted that paved. Is that also for the residential?
Yeah, so we kept that in just to stay consistent in how we are applying that. Because any, if they were to add any parking spaces within their site, those are required to be paved surfaces within those areas. So we kept that just to be consistent with how our ordinance has been applied and how it has been enforced. Of course, the vast majority of ninety-nine point nine-nine percent, maybe hundred percent, honestly, the parking on a residential area is going to take place in their driveway and their existing areas like garages and things like that. For the commercial areas that may look differently, they may have to likely have to add spaces. Just depends. So, yep. And then, yeah, the definition of the owner occupied, that we added that one hundred and eighty-three days to again, kind of, what is owner occupied to further kind of clarify that? Yeah, because we also understand that with homesteaded properties too, that there's certain market value amounts where folks may not homestead their property. So we didn't want to include any like language tied to that, but hey, if you live in this residence, the majority of the year, that's considered your, you know, primary residence owner occupied. Yep. And then we would have as part of the application process, they would acknowledge and then sign off on that along with other conditions that are within the ordinance. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with the, for the residential is that if, if, if it's under the ordinance, I don't think they should have to pave it, especially they're not going to have fifty-two million rooms in their house. They're probably going to do the two. And if they wanted to utilize their rocky or rocked area, that should be good enough. We shouldn't have to make them pay for that. But I don't know how much we're going to push on that or not. So hopefully we, we won't.
Yeah, that's kind of why it's also like how I wanted to highlight it too is to, you know, further expand on that and see if that's something that is agreed to. Yep.
Excuse me. I had one resident bring up that the contact information being posted outside of their house would be a little too invasive on their privacy, but I'm okay with keeping that language in there because I'm thinking of like our police and fire, like if Dwight needs to come upon a house for any and all reason and he needs to contact a homeowner now or somebody that could be like the owner of the residence, like they need to have that information accessible and like similar with like our fire department. If we come upon a structure fire, we want to be able to contact the homeowner immediately to know is there somebody in the house that we should be aware of? So that was a little bit of feedback that I'd gotten from the public, but I don't believe we should really move on that. Like we need to be able to contact the homeowner if there's emergencies.
And one thing we could do is in terms of the display of their license, is we could have the license on the front. And then there could be a flip side or a backside that displays that contact information. So it's not like right out there. You know, you'd have to flip it up or, you know, the PD would, would know to do that, but others may not, you know? So that could be a way to maybe mitigate that a little bit.
Sure. So Nate, are we saying like the license and these phone numbers are going to be like right below the doorbell?
So, yeah, it'd have to be in the front entrance area. Correct. So the, yep, the license displayed there. And then the contact information.
Only when someone's, only when I'm renting to somebody. When I'm living there and I'm not renting it, I can take it off the nail and not have it there.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess we don't specify that it has to be displayed like the entire year. So that, I mean, that could be.
Just when it's being rented is what I assume this means.
It could be applied that way. Yeah, I'd like to hear others' thoughts on that.
Well, if I'm only renting it for a month, I'm not going to be hanging a sign that looks kind of tacky for the other eleven months.
And I mean, I think it goes back to the purpose of why is it being displayed? Why are those contacts? If it's, if the use is not in use, then what is the need to do that? So I think it hits on that and aligns with the purpose. Yeah.
And then Lori, how do we know we're getting all of the lodging tax from the bed and breakfast and from the roadway in? I mean, we don't audit them. We just take their word for it when they send in the quarterly sales results?
Right. They gave us the, the forms submitting what their net receipts are. So I guess.
Is it a form they file with the state or just something that comes off their QuickBooks?
Something that comes from their system.
Andrew, Adam, you guys have any comments?
The displaying, how are you going to keep that weather?
Yeah, so it's really up to the property owner to display that in a weatherproof.
So there's no going to be no standardized form. It's just.
No, I mean, we've talked about when we issue the license that we could, you know, at least maybe issue it where it's laminated, but as far as like what they display it in and how they display that, whether it's a frame or whatnot, we're not, we didn't specify that. But at least if we laminate it, that could, you know, provide something. So.
Are there any other comments? Would we have a motion to move forward with this?
I move to approve ordinance resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero zero one.
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. And then, go ahead.
I'm going to, to approve the resolution of two thousand and twenty-five oh five, which authorizes the publication of the summary of the ordinance.
Second. All those in favor of moving to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero zero five, signify by aye. Aye. Those opposed? That passes as well. We move to item number six.
All right, I'll take the first half of this one. So this follows your actions that council had just made in regards to the short-term rental. So for fee schedule, we have to make some updates to our fee schedule and add in the amounts tied to short-term rental. This does require a public hearing and there are two actions tied to this. There's an action to approve ordinance resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero zero two, which would approve the license fee rates. And then secondary action is to approve the summary publication, two thousand and twenty-five zero zero seven. For short-term rentals, the drafted fees include an annual license rate of a hundred dollars for that first short-term rental unit. Any other property that has more than one short-term rental unit, it'd be twenty-five dollars per unit. We also tied in a fifty-dollar reinspection fee. That reinspection fee follows our standard reinspection fees for our standard rental license. Again, we really try to keep these rates as reasonable as possible and to just cover, you know, our basic cost with that. This, of course, does not include if the property needs to obtain a conditional use permit or other land use actions, then those would be in addition to those fees. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions for short-term rental fees. If not, then I'll hand it over to Lori, who can talk about the second part.
Any other discussion before we open the public hearing?
Well, Lori's got to go for it on bulk water.
Yeah, I was.
I'm sorry. It's all right. Believe we're good. You can go ahead, Lori.
On the bulk water fees, we have a system. It's called the Water Salesman. When we built the water treatment plant out on ninety-four, that came with like a little credit card system. Contractors could come to City Hall and buy this con, this little credit card. We would load gallons basically on this credit card. They could go to this water salesman and load up, you know, the gallons of water that they need to use for, I don't know, street construction or farming or whatever their purpose is. The software to run that credit card machine and coordinate with the water salesman is no longer supported. Between us and Public Works, we had looked at upgrading that and it would cost at least seventy thousand. We just don't sell enough of those cards for us to be able to do that. So internally, we, we came up with a system where Public Works kind of goes out there and monitors the usage for contractors to still draw that water. And then they'll turn over and turn in that slip to us here in admin to bill out the usage. So when we did that and we no longer sold the cards, we got rid of the base fee because we weren't selling that credit card. But we realized that we weren't covering our admin costs when we got rid of that base fee. So we want to go ahead and replace or add back in that base fee basically to cover that billing process that we're having to do now and tracking those usages. So it's basically just to add back that base fee. So.
How much is it?
Uh, we are proposing fifteen dollars, I believe it was.
Well, then with that, I believe we can open the public hearing. If anybody'd like to make a comment about the fee schedule amendments, you're welcome to come forward. Joe? Speaking of like force, Joe.
Do you have a card already?
If you already have a card?
Yep. I got two. My son's got one too.
Lori, can you feel that?
It was on the honor system before, last year.
Yeah, the, the cards themselves are inoperable.
Well, I understand that, but.
Was it a one-time charge when they got the?
Yeah, yeah, but the, the base fee now is really just covering our time. You know, our maintenance staff has to go out there and monitor the usage, turn that in. We have to turn around and bill it out. So.
Paid the base fee. Because I have a card.
That base fee that you paid was basically for that card, which is no longer good. So the base fee that you would pay now is going to be for us, the administrative time that it's taken us now to, to manage your future, your future purchases.
Mine for about five or six years, I think, previous.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's really for us to manage the future purchases that you have.
What if I still have money on the card?
We have no way to even track that.
That, so, okay, thanks.
Sorry.
Thank you, Joe. Seeing nobody else come forward, we'll close the public hearing for the fee schedule amendment. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero zero two?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
To approve the summary of two thousand and twenty-five oh seven, correct?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Believe we're on to number seven, two thousand and twenty-five, street improvements and feasibility report.
Good evening. I guess maybe by way of introduction, this is a follow-up to the December council workshop meeting that we had. The council, or at least the members that were present at the time, may recall, we had a discussion on several street locations that this is, it happens to be the third generation of the city's pavement maintenance plans. We have a document that helps guide pavement maintenance activities based on the age and condition of, of the streets. So it helps us from a orderly perspective prioritize projects and, and help budget for them. And so each year we have several neighborhoods or several streets that are identified in this document that would be at least candidates for a maintenance activity. And so the December workshop meeting, we had discussed or reviewed those project areas. Oftentimes, councilors will be aware of other areas in, in the community that might be in need of maintenance activities. And so those all get discussed and we prioritized in December. The next step the council took was to order what we call a feasibility report. So it's a document that is actually required by the state statute four twenty-nine that, that governs special assessment. So it's a public process that we follow when the city is going to entertain a, a public improvement. Tonight, so you have, you have in your packet the actual document. Bryce is going to walk through a slideshow here, at least the highlights of, of, of the feasibility report and provide an opportunity if the council has questions. So with that, we'll switch here to Bryce to walk through the, the highlights of the feasibility report.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, mayor and council. As Randy mentioned, I will be presenting the feasibility report highlights for the two thousand and twenty-five street improvements. So these are the project locations. We have Fourth Avenue, Elena Lane, Ellie Court, Twelfth Avenue Southeast, Abel Street East, Abel Court East, Thirteenth Avenue Southeast, Pondview Lane, Eagle Ridge Drive, Eagle Ridge Court, Dale Street East, Callaway Street East, Eighth Avenue Northeast, Minnesota Street West, Third Avenue Northwest, and a section of the Minnesota Street Trail. Those streets are shown here, mostly in purple. The areas in purple are proposed to have an edge mill and overlay performed. And Minnesota Street, this section is a rural section with no curb and gutter, so edge milling is not necessary. We're proposing a overlay on that section. And shown very slightly here in red is the Minnesota Street Trail that extends from roughly here down Minnesota Street and then along Casado and across Interstate ninety-four. This is a typical degradation curve for a pavement life cycle. So we have time on the X axis and the pavement condition on the Y axis. And all this is demonstrating is that by performing maintenance tasks at a certain time, you extend the life of your road. So as the condition of the road goes down, we perform a seal coat. And the condition continues to deteriorate, at which point we could perform an overlay. But if nothing is done, as you see in this black line, there is a point where the condition of the pavement starts to increasingly degrade to the point where you have to rebuild the road. So that's all part of the CIP that the city has is performing these maintenance tasks at certain points of time to maximize the life of your roads. So first, we will look at the section circled here, Grace View Estates.
Hey Bryce, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What does RSI mean on that previous graph?
Remaining service interval.
Okay, thanks.
So again, we have Grace View Estates here. So Abel Street East is on the, on the west side here. Abel Court is this cul-de-sac here. And then Thirteenth Avenue begins at Abel Court and extends down to the east and south. So the existing conditions and proposed improvements, uh, this area was originally constructed in two thousand and three. It's approximately twenty-two years old. It is a thirty-six foot wide urban section with curb and gutter uh, consisting of four inches of bituminous overlying, six inches of aggregate base. This is a nine ton design. Uh, the most recent maintenance activities were a crack seal in twenty twenty and aggregate seal coat in twenty twenty-one. Again, uh, we are proposing an edge mill and a one and a half inch bituminous overlay along with adjustments to water main gate valves and sanitary and storm manholes as needed, as well as curb patching uh, as needed. This is the proposed typical section. So again, we've got a one and a half inch bituminous overlay. So what we would do is is mill an edge that's eight or mill a swath that's eight feet wide to give us to give us an inch and a half to an inch and a quarter gap at the curb lip that the bituminous pavement can tie into. So we're tying into the curb lip flush. And then we would extend that inch and a half overlay all the way across the existing pavement. This is Elena Lane. So this is exhibiting uh, normal wear and tear. We we see lateral and uh, horizontal transfers cracking. Uh, so this is the normal looking street for this age.
One of the reasons why we like to show this photograph often when we get into the public hearing and some of the existing council members um, have heard this before where they say, well, geez, that street looks looks really good. Why are we investing in an overlay? And the reason being, going back to that graph that Bryce had up earlier, when the street is riddled with potholes and cracked, it's kind of beyond that point where we can effectively overlay uh, the street. So we are looking to overlay a street when it still has uh, a a good looking surface condition. And so what pictures that Bryce was showing, cracking is normal, especially large block cracking is normal. But this is the the opportune time for us to to look at an overlay, not when it is riddled with potholes. By that time, we're usually having to take the whole pavement out or completely reconstruct it. So timing is kind of the key of, at least when we're looking at a maintenance, maintenance activity.
That's the middle part of that curve where you see the the degradation really increase. That was Elena. This is Fourth Avenue Southeast, looking very similar. All right. Next, we are going to look at the Pondview Neighborhood. So this is actually part of the Pondview subdivision as well, Abel and Thirteenth. Um, but this is probably more known as the Pondview Neighborhood down here. So here we have Twelfth Avenue Southeast, Pondview Lane, Eagle Ridge Drive, Eagle Ridge Drive and Eagle Ridge Court. So the Fifth Edition was originally constructed in nineteen ninety-eight. So that's sorry, that's a typo there. So that would be uh, the northernmost section, so Eagle Ridge Drive and Eagle Ridge Court were constructed with the sixth subdivision of of the Pondview Edition. Sorry, the fifth, the fifth, the fifth edition rather. Sorry, that is correct. So Thirteenth Abel was constructed as part of the Fifth Edition nineteen ninety-eight. The Sixth Edition is the northernmost chunk of of that southern section that I just showed, Eagle Ridge Drive and Eagle Ridge Court. That was constructed in two thousand and one. The Seventh Edition was constructed in two thousand and three and the Ninth in two thousand and five. These are all a thirty-six foot wide urban section. There's a little bit of a thinner pavement section on the Fifth Edition, Abel and Thirteenth. That's three inches of bituminous over five inches of aggregate base. As we move south, uh, the soils were such that they required a thicker section. So in the Sixth Edition, we have a four inches of bit over twelve inches of aggregate base with fabric and drain tile. And the Seventh and Ninth Editions have four inches of bituminous over over six and eight inches of aggregate base in Pondview and Twelfth respectively. And then we also have a twelve inch granular structural subgrade section, again with the geotextile fabric and a six inch drain tile uh, that functions as as keeping that pavement section dry, draining the water, ground water out of it. The most recent pave uh, maintenance activities were crack seals in twenty twenty and aggregate seal coat in twenty twenty-one. Again, here we are proposing an edge mill and one and a half inch bituminous overlay, curb patching as needed. Here, again, we see the typical section for for these streets, showing the one and a half inch bituminous overlay similar to what we had before. The only difference being the width of the street. And some photos, this is Twelfth Avenue, again exhibiting normal, normal wear and tear, normal cracking. And Pondview Lane, same thing. So there are areas where uh, these manholes have grown a little bit. Over time, it sometimes takes years and years for that for that soil to to really settle. So these may be areas that we would look at doing a full a full depth adjustment, uh, pulling the casting off, putting new rings on and patching around that before the overlay occurs. This is Eagle Ridge Drive, again, normal wear and tear. All right, now we will move on. Yeah, absolutely.
Fourth Avenue.
Uh, I'm in looking at the map in the packet. When did Twelfth Avenue north of where we're proposing to make these changes get constructed? I'm just.
North of here, north of our takeout point?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just why are we doing just that part? We wouldn't be doing all of Twelfth, like up to Baker or something. I'm trying to get my head wrapped around that idea of just doing this one chunk of twelve instead of doing it all the way to Baker or to Minnesota. So was it that Pondview went in first? So.
I can, I can take that a little bit. Um, yeah, those those additions were built at different times. Um, I don't have the, I don't have the exact time um, in my head. But I believe the stuff to the north was resurfaced in
Four, four years ago.
Four years ago, yeah. So, so it is definitely aged.
Oh, so the stuff north of there already went through a mill and overlay?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so Twelfth Avenue, this part of Twelfth Avenue is getting caught up.
Correct.
Good enough, it's all ahead. I'm anticipating phone calls from people I know on Twelfth.
All right, so now we'll look at Eighth Avenue and the Cloverdale subdivision, Callaway and Dale down here. So the Cloverdale, Cloverdale Estates, again, Callaway Street East on the north and Dale Street on the bottom here. And then we have Eighth Avenue Northeast from County Road seventy-five to Minnesota Street East. Dale and Callaway were last reconstructed in two thousand and five with a sewer and water project. They're approximately twenty years old. Again, these are a thirty-six foot wide urban section, three and a half inches of bituminous, over six inches of aggregate base. Eighth Avenue was last reconstructed in two thousand and six. That is a thirty foot wide urban section with three and a half inches of bituminous, over eight inches of aggregate base. This also has an eighteen inch granular borrow structural subgrade section. Maintenance activities on Dale and Callaway Street include a twenty twenty crack seal and a twenty twenty-one aggregate seal coat. Proposed improvements here, same as the other areas, a one and a half inch bituminous uh, overlay after an edge mill, curb patching as needed. Uh, Eighth Avenue, the crown is is settled a bit as well. So that may require a leveling course prior to the inch and a half overlay. Again, we've got our typical sections here for a one and a half inch overlay. Well, this would be an area that we would look at patching. You can see the deterioration of the pavement, which is is more common at intersections with slower moving traffic, turning. Uh, so this is an area we'd look at performing a full depth patch prior to the inch and a half overlay. All right. Next, we have Minnesota Street West and Third Avenue. So Minnesota Street, the section uh, that we're looking at is shown in green here. And Third Avenue Northwest, the section we're looking at is shown in purple. Minnesota Street was last reconstructed in nineteen seventy-four, but it was last overlaid in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and two, uh, west and east respectively. So that's what this red line is delineating. And the reason that we would look at overlaying this section now is just to tie everything into the roundabout project. So we would actually not propose performing this overlay until next June, next late May or June, after the roundabout is complete. We want, we want to let all that construction happen and they can uh, you know, beat up the existing pavement. We would come through and overlay it after that project is complete. Twenty-six, yes.
So we just phase it so that it would carry over into?
Same project.
Season, same project, but we just define that timeframe that that work would be.
Oh, we approve it now. It gets bid now too?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So that would be defined in the contract documents and they'd understand that that would be paved
Okay.
next year.
Yep.
Does the county definitively say that?
What the detour is going to be for that roundabout?
Uh, I don't know if we want to say definitively, but the but they have a, they have a plan that will, it'll be more circuitous or around because we don't have a lot of ways to to bypass um, Minnesota Street.
So this would be the the best course of action to do this in twenty twenty-six, not try and run them at the same time?
We we could, the concern would have been, you know, even if it was the same, it could even be the same contractor that ends up doing both work. But because the county will be bidding that project separately of ours, we we really couldn't take that chance. So we'd rather come after they're done versus be there first and.
Okay.
So.
So Minnesota Street West is a forty foot wide rural section, no curb and gutter, water drains right to ditches with a three and a half inches of bituminous overlying, six inches of aggregate base. Third Avenue Northwest was last reconstructed in two thousand and two. That is a thirty foot wide urban section, three and a half inches of bituminous, over eight inches of aggregate base. Maintenance activities on these areas include a twenty fourteen crack seal and a twenty sixteen aggregate seal coat. Um, again, we're proposing edge mill and one and a half inch overlay on Third Avenue because it hasn't, it has an urban section. Minnesota Street, we don't need to edge mill. We would propose just overlaying the existing pavement and then shouldering along there to reconcile the the height difference that the added pavement um, would create. Curb patching is needed, as well as ADA pedestrian ramp improvements on Third Avenue Northwest and Minnesota Street at that intersection. Here we have a typical section. You'll see Minnesota Street, rural section, no curb and gutter. So again, we would, we would overlay an inch and a half across the whole thing and then add an aggregate shoulder to reconcile that that difference. Uh, finally, we have the Minnesota Street Trail. So again, this faint line in red here along Minnesota Street to Kasah Two and across Interstate ninety-four is the Minnesota Street Trail. That is a ten foot wide rural section that was constructed in two thousand and sixteen and has two and a half inches of bituminous over six inches of aggregate base. This we would propose to have a fog seal, which is essentially a similar product to the tack coat that goes down in between bituminous layers. Uh, it's a, it's a liquid, it's a liquid um, petroleum product that's sprayed on that essentially just rejuvenates the surface and gives you a a new surface, seals, seals a lot of the micro cracks in place. Uh, and again, going back to that, that graph uh, curve that we showed at the beginning of the sides, it it just is going to push out your your maintenance activities on that pavement.
When it comes to pedestrian trails, our our toolbox isn't as deep. For example, we can't or we generally don't seal coat or or do chip seals on trails because the the texture of the surface isn't smooth. And so rollerbladers, bicyclists um, don't like that as much. So we don't have as many tools to to maintain our bituminous surface on trails like we do as a a public street. And so fog sealing, we we will typically do that. But I I want to say since two thousand and twelve, any new trail that we build will actually include a fog seal as part of its original construction. So we help really seal it uptight. And then we'll come back and do several years later, another fog seal. So we found that to be an effective, a- as has the state, is an effective tool to help maintain or lengthen the life of our of our pedestrian trails.
This is the typical section. Uh, again, just showing that fog seal on top. All right, probable costs or construction cost comes in at seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars with our contingency feasibility report, design, engineering, legal, fiscal, administrative. We have a total project cost of roughly one million dollars. So these are just the areas broken down uh, or the the cost broken down by area. So uh, again, with the improvements listed as well.
So is this number, we're looking at the one million fifteen thousand, is that for what's going to happen in twenty twenty-five?
Th- this would be the whole project.
Including the green part of West Minnesota?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And again, these are, these are our engineers' estimates at this point, so nothing has been designed. You haven't gone out for public bids, so we're still working with engineering level estimates at this point.
Yep. All right, so project funding, again, we have a project areas listed. And then we've got our preliminary special assessment revenue, projected revenue here along with the city subsidy and then our total for each area. So as it sits now, per the city's assessment policy, we're looking at roughly six hundred thousand dollars of assessment revenue and four hundred thousand dollars of city subsidy.
And what we will typically see, or at least what the the city's practice has been in the past, is if the project moves forward and we go to um, say, design, uh, the city council has typically ordered in an assessment benefit analysis. That's the special appraiser that comes in, takes a look and sees, or takes a look and and opines on the increase in market value due to to the improvement. But we typically see then, and so so we start out with projecting special assessments up to sixty percent. So that's when we calculate based on your policy, the maximum level of assessment at sixty percent. And what typically happens is it o- o- often switches that uh, that amount of special assessment revenue is reduced because the uh, special assessment appraisal determines a lower amount. And so we would typically see the city subsidy column increase, but at this stage, we calculate those special assessments based on your policy, which has a maximum of sixty percent level of assessment.
So we're going to have another meeting where they'll show some other numbers.
Yeah, so the next meeting that we'll have, your action tonight, if this moves forward, would be to schedule the public improvement hearing. So we basically have a similar slideshow as this to present the project to the public, give them an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, but at that point, we're only giving estimates and preliminary uh, indication what those assessments would be. The second hearing is the special assessment hearing. And by that time, you've done the the special benefit analysis. We would typically have bid the project, so we have actual contract costs. And then we move into that that special assessment phase. So kind of progressively get more accurate numbers as the project proceeds a little further down.
And then on Minnesota Street West, most of that on the south side is owned by the sisters. Do they pay street improvements?
They 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 would now. So as you may be aware, that that used to be County Road Two. And so after two thousand and twelve, that was a turn back to the city. So now Minnesota Street is a local street and at least following your policy, you would be levying special assessments to the extent that benefit is 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 demonstrated. So we would propose to levy an overlay. Um, but it remains to be seen how much of that frontage uh, So we would propose to levy an overlay, um, but it remains to be seen how much of that frontage, uh, will be benefited by the improvement.
And Lori, have we collected street improvement assessments from the sisters in the past or the college in the past?
Yes, we do, um, yeah, so Texas and properties are eligible to pay assessments.
All right.
These would be our preliminary special assessment rates, again, broken down by area. So what we ended up with was a twenty-seven to thirty-foot wide street overlay. So that would be Third Avenue, Eighth Avenue and Eagle Ridge Drive and Eagle Ridge Court. And then we have a thirty-two to thirty-three foot wide overlay. And so these, these widths are the bituminous width. So I was referencing a thirty-six foot wide urban section. When I say that, um, we typically call that a thirty-six foot wide section when we're looking at the face of curb to the face of curb, really the whole area that you can drive on. Uh, but when we're looking at this, we're, we're looking at the bituminous width. So that's why this thirty-two to thirty-three foot wide street overlay label is here. Uh, so that rate is thirty dollars and sixteen cents for the area shown. And then we finally have a forty-one foot wide street overlay on West Minnesota Street at twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents per linear foot. Any questions here?
Yeah, we, we're showing it at that sixty percent level. So I, you know, in, in theory, this hopefully is a maximum amount. And then typically, we were able to demonstrate those assessments come down, uh, as, as the, the project progresses, if you would.
And those numbers are per foot, per linear foot.
Of frontage, yep. All right, and finally, we have our schedule, so we sit here tonight on the eighteenth. So as Randy mentioned before, the action before you would be to receive the feasibility report and order a public hearing, public improvement hearing. As Randy mentioned, that's the first, that's the first of two required hearings in the chapter four twenty-nine assessment process. Uh, so we would propose that hearing to occur on March seventeenth. If everything goes well, uh, orders for plans and specifications would be ordered at that time. Uh, this would give us an authorization to go out for bids April twenty-first and declare the cost to be assessed and set a special assessment hearing date on April twenty-first as well. Uh, we would then have a public bid opening on May twenty-second as well as our special assessment hearing. I think actually our special assessment hearing may be later than that. Um, council may award the contract on June second, looking at a construction start time in July. And the project would be substantially complete in June of twenty twenty-six after that Minnesota Street overlay is completed with construction being fully complete in July of twenty twenty-six. Uh, with that, I will take any questions.
So I don't know how a contractor can bid on something they're not gonna build for over a year. That's the only thing, I mean, it's none of my business how to run a street improvement business, but you, this must have had, this must be standard operating procedure.
I- i- it is, particularly if we have a construction project where we're building utilities, say, one year, and we typically will hold off the final layer of blacktop just in case there's any settlement. And so contractor has to account for paving, uh, that final layer, will layer in the next year. So it does involve them making some assumptions as to what's the, what's the price of oil or what, you know, what's gonna change in terms of materials. Um, but that is fairly standard operating procedure for us.
And then when does the letter go out to the residents that there's a public hearing on March seventeenth?
At least two weeks ahead of time.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, I think it's like fourteen.
I mean, the sooner the better. We all want them to get it on March fifteenth.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, there's statutory requirements on when we are required to send it out.
So we do try to build, e- even with the schedule that Bryce had shared, we do try to build enough time between council actions, administrative time that it takes to assemble all the letters and get the notices out. So we don't try to compact that schedule too, too tightly.
Any other questions, guys?
Or do you know that the main is going to be good under these bituminous improvements?
So that, that's a fair question. I've, we figured we'd wanna have a subsequent conversation with that. So some current events have, have, have maybe raised the question that Councilor Schnettler asks. Uh, we had a water main leak that developed, uh, actually twice, uh, in his neighborhood, once in twenty twenty-four, once in, uh, in fact, if I can steal the steal the screen here from you. So what, what, what we're typically doing to, to try to answer that question directly, um, certainly we're, we're coordinating with Public Works. If there's, uh, an operational issue that's happened over time, we would not typically expect i- in the life cycle of a street. So we're talking a, a twenty to thirty-five year life cycle. Typically, if the utilities are, are within that twenty, twenty-five year life frame, lifetime, we would expect a longer duration, uh, for, for the, the water main to, to function, if you would. So in this case, uh, a- all of these neighborhoods, the, the, the utilities are a similar age of the streets, twenty to twenty-seven years old, for example. And so that's still within the, the normal operating timeframe, uh, of a, of a pipe or a utility. Now, we have had, uh, both in, in, uh, Adams Neighborhood, um, in, in Northland. We've had, uh, two breaks, uh, on Gumtree. We've had one that we're aware of in Northland Heights or Northland Seven. And then we've had the one that has been more recently on our radar, uh, the water main breaks in the Morningside Neighborhood. So we've had, uh, two, two breaks on, um, Hill Street. And then in twenty twenty-four, we had a break at, um, at Iverson Street. So the council may be aware, we had, um, most recently, in fact, we received the report in December, um, just after we had our workshop meeting on, on, uh, the street improvements. We're trying to identify whether or not there was a, uh, connection to that corrosion to the uh, cathodic protection system, uh, with, with the high pressure gas main. Uh, that report came back that they did not establish a, an electrical connection between, uh, the, the gas main and the pipe. Um, and so and I'll show you some, a couple of photographs here, at least what had been leading us to that's, this, this is the one that just happened up by Adam's house. Uh, this is, what we're looking at here is a section of pipe. This is a, a mechanical joint, uh, so you see bolts. And this is where, uh, the pipe is inserted into a fitting, in this case, an, an actual T. And the source of failure looks to be that we had corrosion on what, what the part is called a gland. And so this is what holds the pipe inside the female, uh, section of, of the, uh, of the fitting. As you can see, the actual exposed threads, uh, of the bolt. And the, normally that, that gland would look something like what you see on top. And you don't see that same structure here. So this was the source of the leak in, in, um, twenty twenty-five. This looks a little different, um. This was actually, Ryan, this one was from the year prior, right? This was the first section by, uh, Adam's House where you can see some corrosion on the actual pipe surface, uh, itself. The, um, other photos I wanted to share, or at least to try to contrast. You see the, the parking or the, the pitting on the pipe? So this was, this was the leak in twenty twenty-four on Iverson. And this is, this type of, of marring, if you would, um, is often associated with that electrolysis that I was describing. So that's what was leading us to believe that maybe there was a connection with the cathodic protection system. We also see some pitting, uh, in the actual pipe surface itself or the exterior of the pipe. So, um, we've been kind of work, we have been working this somewhat progressively. We're trying to get the connection, see if there was a connection with the electrolysis, since that had, has not, um, proven itself. Uh, our next step, we have a, we've solicited a proposal, uh, from Broad Intertek to collect some soil borings, uh, in the Morningside Neighborhood so that we can test the soils around the pipe. We took big samples, uh, with this most recent, uh, repair in front of Adam's House. So those, those two soil samples have been submitted to the lab and we're awaiting test results, uh, on those as well to determine whether or not we, we have what. The other scenario that can cause this kind of damage is what we call, uh, hot soils or, or corrosive soils where the soil type and the interaction with the pipe causes this level of, of, of corrosion. So all of, nearly all of the pipe in Saint Joseph, since you've had a water main system, has either been, uh, cast iron pipe or ductile iron pipe. Ductile iron pipe is its more recent brother, if you would. Um, cast iron pipe was starting to fall out of favor maybe in the seventies because it was very brittle in our climate and would tend to, tend to shear. And so ductile iron pipe replaced it. But this has been the first instance, uh, of, of all of the pipe that we have in service where we've started to see, um, this type of corrosion. So this is something new for, for us or for the community, um. And so now that we've likely eliminated electrolysis, now we're gonna test to see whether or not it's a hot soil condition. But we don't have those test results back yet, uh, and that's gonna likely occur here over the, over the next month or so. So that was a long-winded answer, but typically either we're seeing a performance issue where there's a history of breaks or leaks. Um, we would not typically expect to see that with twenty to twenty-five-year-old pipe. Uh, your assessment policy describes the useful life of a pipe, uh, PVC or, or a ductile iron pipe is forty years. And so until we would get to a forty or fifty-year-old pipe, would we start more seriously considering a, a utility replacement, if you would, unless there was an operational history of, or, or a problem with it? Um, and certainly there are examples where ductile iron pipe has been in service for more than forty years, uh, eighty to a hundred years, you might see the ductile iron pipe industry describe that their pipe will last that long. So, um, but from us, from our standpoint, when we're evaluating street improvements, um, typically, we're not having to, to evaluate twenty-five-year-old, uh, water or sanitary sewer, uh, as, as being a, a risk of failure at that age.
So is that fifty-year-old one on Main, uh, Minnesota? Is that a concern or is there a test to be taken for that?
So it's less of a concern, only from the standpoint of most of Minnesota Street has been sand and gravels and much of Saint Joseph is, is sand and gravels. And so some of these areas that we're finding this type of corrosion occurring, we have much more suspect, suspect soils, uh, your neighborhood of Nor- of, of Northland would be one. Certainly the, what we're seeing in the trenches from the Hill Street area of Morningside, uh, is, is, is also similar. But and in this case, uh, as, it's my understanding that the soil type rather abruptly changed right around Hill Street. Cause if you go to, Kevin probably remembers this when we built, uh, uh, Field Street, plenty of sand and gravel, uh, on, on Field Street and, and parts of College Avenue. Uh, and as we got further south towards, uh, Kennedy and, and Lanigan and the schools, the materials change again. Um, but where we've had sand and gravels, to my knowledge, we haven't observed any type of leak, break, uh, or other operational problem with, with either utility sewer or water. So consequently, um, I, again, based on our actions or the, the discussion with the workshop meeting back in December, we don't have Morningside in the street improvement area, you likely noticed, uh, because we still wanted to work through identifying the options for addressing the water main. Any more questions?
I think that may have been all of our questions. What action were you seeking from us again, Randy?
So tonight, uh, the, the, there's a resolution before you to receive the feasibility report and schedule the public improvement hearing. Um, that would be our, our next step.
Twenty twenty-five zero zero six is the resolution.
Can we see a motion on that by anybody?
I, I'm motioned on twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
Zero zero six.
Zero zero six.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Randy, thank you, Bryce. Moving on to item number eight, department reports. Do we have anything from Dwight, Jeff, Ryan, Lori?
I have three things real quickly.
Go for it.
So last meeting, our planning commission discussed the idea of having a potential student liaison involvement um, as part of their commission, and they were supportive of that. I know that probably requires further dialogue and discussion from council and mayor and that, but just wanted to update, uh, the group on that. And then second item I have is there is some legislation that's being authored. And, um, there was an email that I think David had sent out earlier in regards to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Um, they support this, uh, legislation as well. It's called, uh, Senate File thirteen thirty-nine. And it's tied to authorizing funds for housing. Um, I know that the council has had a strategic goal and priority for housing, um, in the community, trying to facilitate that. Um, so I'll be, um, testifying in support of that on Thursday. Um, and as it's authored right now, would be twenty million dollars. That would be appropriated for this housing program. And it would essentially act as like our BDPI for industrial or that stands for Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant, but housing. So, um, I think there's some pretty good support for that. And then the last item I have is I will not be at your next meeting. I will be out of the office that entire first week of March. So that's all I have.
I was just gonna let you know I'm also out the first week in March, so we'll not be at that meeting either.
So reports, um, I have something to report, but do you guys have anything?
I just have a question for Dwight. Our new part-time officer, is he on, on boarded and taking shifts?
Absolutely.
Right, Vic, is that his name?
Correct. Yep, with his experience that he had with the county and obviously working in the city of Avon part-time, knowing our computer system, taking calls for the last twenty-five plus years, we gave him about two or three orientation shifts to Saint Joe and made sure he wasn't on by himself for two or three, and he says, I'm good to go. So.
And he didn't have to go through a swearing-in process here like other officers have? Is that an oversight on our part or is that something he didn't have to do?
Yeah, I don't really know on that one. I, I don't know if that's just kind of a full-time thing or because he's kind of like temporary seasonal, how that works, I
I think he should be sworn in. Yep, I think that'd be a good thing to do because we don't know how long he'll be part-time and he is part of the force, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So just maybe talk to David about that.
Well, the one thing that I have to report, couple of things, um, I have three mayor forums coming up, so if you guys don't get to hear me enough. Uh, we're having one tomorrow morning. It's a multi-mayor area forum. It's going to be at the Saint Cloud Chamber of Commerce at seven-thirty tomorrow morning, bright and early. Um, our little metropolis is gonna Um, our little metropolis is gonna have all six mayors there discussing issues for each city, so if anybody wants to. I don't know if that's gonna be zoomed online, but attend in person and listen to all of us, including me, you're welcome to. Uh, I'm also hosting a mayor forum at Saint Ben's February twenty sixth at six P M. So faculty, college students, and anybody from the community can come and. Just open mic, interrogate me, accost me, ask any questions that you'd like. Um, it's not gonna have any scripted questions, just one hour of open mic to allow people to get to know me and ask questions about the city. And then just to allow that venue for the college students and faculty, I'm also doing one at the La Playa at March sixth at six thirty. So if people want to beverage and. Feel more comfortable in that setting, they can come visit me March sixth at the La Playa, so I have a few opportunities for residents to. Get to talk to me and ask questions. But if that is it for mayor and council reports, we are now going to enter into a closed session, so. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot zero five subdivision three C. The city council is. Is in a closed session to discuss the potential pers- purchase of par- parcel. Eight four dot five three seven nine five dot zero two zero zero. Located at four twenty three, Fourth Ave Northeast, Saint Joseph, Minnesota, five six three seven four. Today's date is February eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Those present include. Council member Kelly Beanyek, council member Kevin Klußner, council member Adam Schneider, council member Andrew Mooney. Myself as mayor, city administrator David Murphy, city clerk Kayla Klein, finance director Lori Bartlett. And police chief Dwight Fondenstein.